Uh, the Brower.
Oh, okay.
That's all I do.
We are live.
Discussing.
Doing our operation.
Where's Gina?
We have entertainment.
There we go.
I was probably because of the operator here.
Work for it?
Yeah.
That's how I build.
You would know I was builder.
Call the August 24th, 2020 City Council Committee to hold an order. The clerk will call the roll. Madam Clerk?
I Rivelo.
Present.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Present.
Frank.
Present.
Freeman. Freeman.
No Freeman.
Is absent. McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Porter.
Porter is absent. Radcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Okay.
Uh, maybe someone just chimed in.
Who just joined?
Porter.
Oh, Porter, so.
Porter is present.
Okay. Before we get started, I'd like to offer Mr. McGee a happy birthday. He had a birthday recently.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy birthday.
So, we have a interesting agenda this evening. Mr. Carlisle has signed up again for public comment and tonight the subject is the Boone County Bridges and Permits. So, go ahead.
Need the other ones for anybody else? You can scan it for everybody.
I can make up.
Testing. Thank you. Tonight's comment was, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on some of the things we're doing in the county board. Uh, the Poplar Grove Bridge over the Kish, we finished the deck, uh, and that's on schedule to end and be ready by the end of October. We were gonna probably be two weeks early, but we, some of the people that we had in working on that, they had some COVID experiences, so that won't be done until the end of this Friday. But we're still looking for the end of October to have that completed. Uh, we have a project on a bike path from Belvedere to Poplar Grove. It's the Long Prairie Trail. Uh, we're doing grant applications now and hopefully have that due and finished pretty soon. As I said before, the IDOT has three proposed roundabouts for Route 76 on Spring Creek, Caledonia, Woodstock intersections. The county has proposed reducing an intersection by combining the Woodstock Road and the Caledonia Road into one intersection. We've also, uh, the county's asked IDOT to reevaluate the proposed plan at Spring Creek Road to accommodate our future discussions for the town hall road idea that we could make that into 76 and go north. The other item I wanted to bring up to you is the, uh, it's a PowerPoint on the building permits that I, I was working with Diane Zimmerman. She was very helpful. We connected with some of her software people and we got some of the reports that she could put out in an Excel type format. And these are two of the highlighted ones that I brought forth, just so you guys could look at them, the quantity type that we've seen for the last 10 years. And I did a, just a simple chart and a trend analysis on that. Obviously, 2014 was our big roof repair listing and we know that. And we also see that the, it has kind of declined in some of them. Uh, although, if you look at the fee one, uh, the fees have gone up. In 2019, we, we adjusted our fees, uh, and it shows. And it shows in 2020 also, if we've had a decent year, the fees would have been higher than what the, you currently see. Now, there was some anomalies for 2014, so I did the trend line to take out those anomalies to show the type of trend that we had going on these things. So the pivot tables really came out well, and I just wanted to share the information with you. Uh, I, if you want copies of these things, just jcarlisle@boonecountyillinois.org and I'll send you a copy. Thank you.
Okay. Next up this evening, we have Tom and Jennifer Howlett are here and we've been having some, some very substantive discussions with them lately. Tom's ready to build. And I'll preface this with his presentation. Uh, he's come to us tonight to talk to us about some of the things that we've discussed in the past couple of meetings, but the, the reality of it is this, all around us, people are building homes again. Uh, and we have a lot of lots and we have a lot of potential and there are some specific types of homes that we need. Tom's gonna talk to us about that tonight.
I'm not as good as he is. I have to sit down and hold my stuff.
If you can stand closer to the phone, because unless you're close to the phone up here, they can't hear you. They can't hear you. You can pull the chair up here if you want to. They pull the chair up.
No, this phone.
See, the folks listening at home are hearing it from that microphone.
Okay.
We've kind of patched this whole thing together with the COVID and we're waiting for our new stuff to come from China. So, we may wait a while.
Okay. Can, can you hear me from here? Am I good?
Do you all hear Tom from home?
Hello?
Folks at home can hear Tom clearly?
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Well, good evening. Um, I'm Tom Howlett from Howlett Homes. I'm here to talk about the townhomes of Riverbend. Um, I've owned Howlett Companies for over 30 years and it's resided in Belvedere. Howlett Companies has provided Belvedere community with over hundreds of single-family homes. We would still like to contribute to the community of Belvedere by bringing the townhomes of Riverbend. My children have grown up here. Hopefully, my grandchildren will also. I have owned the lots for 10 years in Riverbend and have done nothing on them because of the economy, the recession, and now the coronavirus, as we all know. My heart breaks knowing that some, some chance I might have to sell these lots due to the taxes and the fees that outweigh their value. I'm here tonight asking for help in making this quality project for our community a success. The help I'm, the help I'm seeking will be a tax abatement, waive of the building, building permit fee, waive of the city's portion of the impact fee. This project is already zoned for townhome rentals. With these concessions, we are ready to start the 32 townhomes this fall with completion by 2022 and willing to invest $4 million into this project. There's been a great need for townhomes in the Belvedere area and rentals. Many employees of Belvedere are seeking rental housing outside of the community and are spending their money outside of Belvedere. We need to help them stay here. It's perfect for the older generation, young professionals, and anyone that is looking for a one-story home that they can rent and not worry about maintenance. There's been a higher demand for rentals in the area. And you would just think, after every year, you would have 32 leases that would come up and 32 opportunities that people could buy homes in the area. And with this being said, I'd like for you to say yes.
Some of the things that we've talked about, and I'll open it up for questions in a minute, um, you know, all of the things that Mr. Howlett is asking for, realistically, we're not getting any of those fees or, or taxes now because nobody's building. And so, simply by looking at what he needs to put his project together, uh, to get this built in the next couple of years, we were talking initially about discussing with council a moratorium on the things he's asking for, for this type of building, which would be townhome construction?
Yes.
Duplexes for the next two years to allow him to get the, finish his project. And I think we gotta start someplace because, as I said, all around us, people are building. And when you build, you bring taxpayers into your community, you enrich your community, you're providing housing that's not available, in this particular instance, a great demand. One of the things that we had took, taken a good hard look at, actually, it's been two years ago now, so the numbers are probably not perfect, but that's why I'm gonna be general. Somewhere between 1,200 and 1,500 young professionals come into this community every day to work in our professional offices, our clinics, uh, dentists, doctors, uh, physical therapists, banks, attorneys, offices, and they go home and they live on the east side of Rockford, on Bell School Road, on Melford, on Riverside, where you see villages of townhomes, et cetera. So, I, I thought that in our discussions with Mr. Howlett and Jennifer Howlett, uh, we, we really felt like this was something we should, we should give to the council to talk about, so I'll open this up to questions, uh, for everybody here and everybody at home. So, council?
Snow has a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Snow.
Um, my understanding, Mayor, about a year ago, um, Country Homes was looking for relief on these same type of things, and I gathered that went nowhere for their end of things. And I don't see, um, if this is, if this is truly a big need, um, I don't know that waiving all of our fees is the way to go when most of the fees, I gathered, are probably school district. And to be quite frank, um, if it's such a great need and these impact fees and all this stuff is put in place, um, because it's needed to support the infrastructure that occurs with this growth, that the people will pay the extra money that's needed in order for the builder to make a profit. I, you know, you can't, you can't do one builder and not for the, the other. Uh, you either put a moratorium on all of it or, you know, you need to open it up for everybody and that's just my thoughts off the cuff.
Well, that would be a direction that the council can certainly go if they would so decide. Just, go ahead.
But the infrastructure is already there. I, are you aware of that?
Somebody had to pay for the infrastructure and the infrastructure was put in by others that all needs to be reimbursed and it was in by the city upfront.
Okay. Other comments and questions? Yes? Alderman Stevens?
What kind of tax abatements are we talking, abating the property taxes for a period of time or what's that?
Becky?
So, the discussion that we had is that the property tax would be abated for a period of four years and we're talking just the city portion. Remember, you have no control over, um, all of the other government entities that collect taxes as well. So, the city portion, based on last year's taxes and based on the value of these townhomes, would be about $780 per building, um, which comes out to about $12,500 a year. Um, so we were thinking over four years, which would be about $50,000.
And I think we were considering two years or four years. I think we looked, we looked at both. Additional questions? Good, good question, Alderman Stevens.
Now, would we also be doing something like waiving water meter fees like we do, not water? How about hookup fees and all that stuff? None of the hookup fees for water?
Connection fees aren't on the table.
Okay.
Yes, Alderman Frank?
How much would the impact fees that we would be waiving, how much would that amount to?
Ms. Tobin?
So, the city portion of the impact fees, these are two-bedroom attached, single-family units, and it would be about $2,050.81 per unit. So, and there's 32 units. So, that comes out to $65,600 is what you'd be, is, that's total. It's, they only pay that once. The impact fees only paid once when the building permits are pulled.
Additional questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, Alderman Flurry, I believe.
So, then what would be the potential revenue after this two or four years of tax abatement? What's the potential revenue that this properties could generate for the city?
Well, after that time is up, then we would be able to recoup our portion of the property taxes off. Like I said, it's about 780. Obviously, that'll grow every year, so you're looking, you know, maybe 800. By the time we were collecting taxes, maybe 800, $850 per unit, so, but, about 13,000 to 14,000 a year is what you'd be looking at after that time. And remember, all your other government entities would still be collecting their portion unless Mr. Howlett were to go and ask those specific entities to, um, to do a similar thing that the city would.
Actually, we, Dan Weisman has gone to his board twice in the last three years to ask them to consider doing this because we thought, you know, that they're the biggest chunk, uh, and his board said no. The reality of that is we're down 800 students in our district. We have these lots laid out. We have sewer and water to these lots. We've invested in infrastructure in terms of wells and other amenities for these lots. Uh, these, these are in Riverbend and this was always plotted, platted, plotted to be townhomes, and Tom has looked at doing this for a number of years. My hope would be that other taxing bodies would look at this and say, you know, they're not getting the money now. We want to be competitive and we have very nice opportunities to increase, um, our population with well-paid individuals that are earning good living, that are gonna enhance all, all of our businesses here in Belvedere. Because one of the things is when you have more people and they have more disposable income, they have the ability to spend it here. And so, it enriches the community all the way around. Um, I, I think that the longer that we do not consider this, and I'm not saying, I mean, it's up to you guys to decide whether you want to do this or not, the longer that we don't do this, the realtors and the banks are telling people, "Don't come to Belvedere" because it costs too much to build a house, the fees are too much. We would argue, uh, as the city of Belvedere, that our sewer and water rates are the lowest in the region, but the, the other things that we have to offer, the low crime rate, the excellent graduation rate in our schools, our parks, our, our, our quality of life here, uh, I think a lot of people would really like to live here. If this is a sticking point and you have people lopping against you to tell people not to come here, we have to find a way to break through that. Question, additional questions or comments, folks at home? Alderman Porter? Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Okay, just one, uh, thing here, maybe play devil's advocate here, but, uh, we have to remember that if we do this for, for them, we're gonna have to do it for other people too, so we can't really play favorites. And my suggestion, I guess that I would ask if we could do is, instead of waiving the fees, how about deferring the fees, uh, you know, till a later date, uh, say when all the units are rented out and, uh, that type of thing.
Well, that's an idea. Let's throw that out there.
Actually, this is Mike Drell. I'd recommend against doing that for a multitude of reasons. Uh, one being, one of the reasons for seeking the, um, abatement as well as the, uh, really from the city's portion, the impact fees, is to provide front-end cost savings so they can market the houses at a cheaper rate. Um, cheaper, I should say, than what they'd be marketing it otherwise here to make them more competitive. If you had to wait until they're all built out, which could be years down the road, frankly, from the developer's perspective, it doesn't assist in making that front-end cost lower for the ultimate home buyer. Uh, the second problem you run into is the fees are actually tied to land. Once he sells that property, we'd be dealing with the ultimate, um, buyer on that as far as either trying to recoup our fees from them at that time or giving them a rebate at that time. And if you give the rebate to the homeowner, again, you're not putting the money in the pocket of the developer to actually help with construction costs. So, to really make it work, it, it kind of has to be on the front end.
And something that came out in our discussion, that if you think about it, prices for builders have gone up, way up. Lumber's out of sight, the cost of a building, and so, uh, this was, Mr. Howlett came to us and he had, uh, figured it out, what he needed to get this moving with the banks, uh, to get the backing he needed to, to go ahead and get these things under construction.
Mike, if I could say one thing, one thing that we had done, uh, we had went to a local bank and we own the lots outright and we tried to put the lots up for collateral and they had found no value in the lot whatsoever. So, to do this project, we have to leverage some of our other properties in other communities to do it, and that's why we're asking for some help.
And to Alderman Porter's point, thank you for your thought. I think Mr. Drell explained why that's, that's probably not a direction we could go. Uh, but yes, we would have to entertain when other builders would come to us and ask for the same, uh, accommodation. We would certainly have to be fair. We'd have to entertain that. But please remember, we have 500 lots sitting empty in the Preserve and Deer Hills too, uh, and it, it doesn't make sense. Our community made significant investment in getting infrastructure to those areas. Uh, you might remember, we had, we put in a new well a few years ago that was a very expensive well, but it's a big producer. So, we have the infrastructure in place to move ahead. We just don't have the folks living in the houses and we don't have the houses for folks to live in, so it, it makes it a little bit difficult. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, against Mike Drell, the fees that we're talking about really were not infrastructure-related fees. The city's portion, the impact fees, the police, fire, and public works impact fees, we first started trying to assess those through the annexation agreement process right around 2004, when we did this annexation agreement. It might have been one of the first ones that we actually started doing this for. Um, they were a recognition at the time of the unbridled, crazy building that was going on and the realization at that time that we were growing so fast, but the taxes are actually lagging behind. All they were meant to do is put some money in the department's pockets for operational costs for that one year for the taxes to catch up. So, the police, fire, and public works impact fees have absolutely nothing to do with infrastructure. They're specifically tailored to operational costs for each of those departments, then spread over a prop, uh, uh, per capita coefficient to break it down to persons per home. The tax dollars, we're actually talking about abating the increment. We'll still get whatever we're getting now on the properties. We'd be abating whatever the increase is for the first few years. We could abate the whole thing as well if we chose to, but the reality is, once that abatement's over, that property is gonna be assessed at a much higher rate than it's assessed now. So, we'll be seeing a much higher return on our tax dollars at that point. But my guess is, and I'll let Mr. Howlett speak to this in greater depth, the, um, the reality is, this is not gonna be a one-year-and-I'm-done project. It'll probably take two or three years to build out. I was...
Two years.
The other aspect of it is, we are not agreeing at this point, we're suggesting to waive connection fees because, yes, those go due towards infrastructure in the future. That's Brent's, uh, the Public Works Director's, uh, fund so they can afford to make the infrastructure improvements as needed as the system grows.
Yes, Alderman Stevens?
I thought impact fees were actually like in a, setting in a bank account someplace and not put into the department as soon as they came in.
They do. They sit in a segregated fund, but the, the amount of the fee and the purpose for the fee was to try and calculate what that one-year catch-up would be for operational costs, and then we've increased them since then as rates go up. But yes, they just have aside, and we use it, for example, for pumper trucks and things like that.
We still have money setting in them accounts, I take it? Okay.
Oh, yes, absolutely. And we keep track of it and, um, once in a while, you'll see during the budget process, especially like the mini pumper right now, a portion of it is being paid for with the impact fees. Um, but no, there's, there's definitely still money in there, and it actually gets moved to the capital fund every year. That's what our auditors made us start doing two years ago.
Now, permit fees, what type of permit fees are we talking about waiving?
Kip, you wanna go into that?
It's probably somewhere around, excuse me, $2,000 a unit. So, around $64,000 total.
And then that, 2,000, that's the inspections for the plumbing, the electrical and you and...
Well, right now, we can't charge for plumbing anyway because we're using the state and he's building the same unit over and over and over, so I anticipate that as they are the same, they're the same, if there's any issues that come up in the first few units, it's gonna be corrected as the project moves forward.
Yes, Alderman Frank?
Um, I'm just wondering, we've, we've, um, added all these taxes in the last couple of years, so is this gonna be something else that the taxpayers have to absorb?
So, let, let's back up there, just a moment. What are all these taxes, okay?
We've had the sales tax, we have the gas tax, um...
We did 2%, 2 cents a gallon on the gas tax.
Well, we've had five.
We did half a percent on the sales tax. Yeah, that's, that's what we've added. And that was kind of in response to the council, two years in a row, voting down our ask for an increase in the levy, which was within the tax caps, which all of the other taxing bodies took advantage of.
Well, my question would be, I'm wondering who picks up the responsibility of these waiving of the fees?
Becky?
So, as far as your, the property taxes go, this is already revenue that we don't get. The buildings don't exist. So, to me, the way I look at it is, we're already not receiving this revenue. So, if, for me, if, if we have to go four more years without recognizing the property tax, I'm okay with that because we're not seeing any right now, knowing that four years from now, we're gonna see a substantial increase from the growth out there. As far as the impact fees go, we're only seeing anywhere from seven, eight, nine new homes a year anyway, so our, the impact fees that we're receiving are not substantial. We're not talking about a lot of money that, that we're not gonna see. Here again, without this happening, this project probably isn't gonna happen. So, um, here again, it's revenue that we, we're not really missing because we don't have it yet.
So, three or four years ago, builders started coming and saying, "We'd like to build, we'd like to build, we'd like to build," and they all said the same thing. "We don't want to pay any fees, we don't want to pay..." And we said no, because at, at that, that point in time, it didn't make any sense to look at it that way. But then, what has really happened, we've been lobbied by the Realtors Association, uh, by other groups, the building, uh, the builders and the trades. They said, "Don't go to Belvedere and build." And so, I proposed to them, I said, "What if I went to the council and said, 'We did, we abated the property tax 1/30 year for three years to the homeowner directly, um, to see if we could get some movement.'" And nobody ever took the ball and ran with that. So, we've had discussion with the realtors again. Uh, we have had discussion with builders that are looking at projects that are already laid out or lots that are already developed, so that this would probably not be the only project, but we were first wanting to start out with this project for duplex townhomes. And, and when other people come forward, they have to go through the same project, present the project to the city for approval by the council before they went ahead with their project. So, it all comes through, uh, the votes of the city council, so the ball's in your court.
Alderman Snow would like to make a comment?
Sure, Alderman Snow, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, obviously, this needs to be put on an agenda for further discussion, which I'm okay with, but I believe that, um, if we're gonna do it for one, we generically need to do it for everybody. Cherry picking, um, one person who comes in and, and makes the, the pitch the right way that you like it, isn't...
And we said no, because at that point in time, it didn't make any sense to look at it that way. But then, what has really happened, we've been lobbied by the Realtors Association, by other groups, the building, the builders and the trades. They said, "Don't go to Belvidere and build." And so I proposed to them, I said, "What if I went to the council and said, 'We did, we abated the property tax 1/30 year for three years to the homeowner directly to see if we could get some movement?'" And nobody ever took the ball and ran with that. So we've had discussion with the Realtors again. We have had discussion with builders that are looking at projects that are already laid out or lots that are already developed. So that this would probably not be the only project, but we were first wanting to start out with this project for duplex tower homes. And when other people come forward, they have to go through the same project, present the project to the city for approval by the council before they went ahead with their project. So it all comes through the votes of the city council. So the ball's in your court.
Alderman Snow would like to make a comment.
Sure, Alderman Snow, go ahead.
Okay, so obviously, this needs to be put on an agenda for further discussion, which I'm okay with, but I believe that if we're going to do it for one, we generically need to do it for everybody. Cherry-picking, one person who comes in and makes the pitch the right way that you like it, isn't for everybody to take the brunt of that. The other is, you know, what about all the people that did build from 2004 onward? Now, granted, the recession hit in, say, 2008, but, you know, they all got saddled with this fee, too. So I get the point of, you know, needing to build out, but you're also, some of those impact fees were for the purpose of building up departments and that, per se, whether it was equipment or just the initial impact. And so you build 100 homes in this particular project, that's 100 calls for service that are out there for the police and fire. So just to let you know, it's more for the, the city has to go in and plow it and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, it all sounds real gravy until you wind up looking at it, and that's the reason the impact fees were put in in the first place. Either that, or we had some bad advice from where that go back in 2004, and I'd hope that may not be the case.
So it's 32 units, which is 16 lots, basically. We're already plowing the streets. The infrastructure for sewer water, except for the connections, are already in. And yes, we're not cherry-picking anything. Tom Howlett came in six weeks ago and said, "Could we take a look at this?" And we all talked together, Becky, Mike, Kip, myself, and said, "It's time we took a look at it." And in the past, and we've also had another group that's looking at those lots that have not been built out in prairie places. And there's like 12 lots out there. So these are not 100-home deals that people are looking at. But of course, everybody that has, it's just like before. When somebody wanted to build something, they came and made a plan, showed a plan, presented it to the council, and the council voted it up, voted it down. And, you know, Dan, I would think with, in the business that you're in, you'd like to see people building stuff because you guys build trusses. So you're selling a lot of trusses these days, right?
We do, but most of it is in Chicagoland and the builders are paying those fees to the villages that are assessed. So I just don't, again, my concern was, I was directly contacted by a competitor to Mr. Howell, and I, it went nowhere as far as I know. So I'm, again, concerned about the cherry-picking, and I think we ought to, you know, be very cautious in just doing it project by project, because I think we're being very predatory.
Anybody else? Yes, Alderman Arivolo, I believe you did want to speak.
I think temporarily, we should ease any burden right now for any developer, because we, in the long run, we will see more revenue coming in. And like, I guess as with Dan Snow, I guess if we have more families here, more taxes will eventually go to the police department. Hopefully, we can build our police department up with more manpower. But also, Illinois, we have a problem with people leaving, immigration going to other states, because we're not very competitive and we're too expensive to work with, too much red tape. We should do things safely, the correct way, but also be, not be a burden to anybody.
Good points. Anybody else? Well, I think where we wanted to go with this tonight was just to get a feel from the entire council about moving forward and placing this on the agenda formally for a more thorough discussion. Since I can't see all your hands, I'll ask those here to raise their hands if they're in favor of moving forward in that direction, and then we'll poll you at home by voice. Okay. Well, we're unanimous in the room, so with those at home, I guess we'll have to do a roll call. Just say aye that they'd be willing to move it forward. This is not a formal vote, this is just an advice. Vote.
Brereton?
Can you guys at home still hear us?
Yes. Yeah, maybe he's on mute. Oh, yeah, he's on mute. Yeah, we can play on the agenda all the time.
McGee?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Radcliffe?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Do you want to take it directly to council and waive having to go to committee with... Because we've got, we have no meeting next Monday.
No.
We have no meeting next...
Committee, needs to go to committee first.
Okay, so that would be, is everybody agreed it needs to go to committee first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Howlett. Jennifer, thanks for coming tonight. And we'll take it up with committee, which is the next committee is September...
It's not going to be till September 14?
September 14. All righty. Next up tonight, under Public Safety, New Business, we have, the Belvidere Police Department has two items I wish to present. Chief Woody is here to present them personally. Chief Woody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The first memo in your packet will be for a request to, for authorization to sign
the Lexus Nexus Law Enforcement Agreement. The Belvidere Police Department is requesting authorization to sign the attached Lexus Nexus Law Enforcement Agreement to allow the Belvidere Police Department to take advantage of the e-Crash program from Lexus Nexus. If authorized, Lexus Nexus will provide countless benefits for the Belvidere Police Department, which are spelled out in the associated materials attached with the motion. Belvidere Police Department would charge the same price, which is $5, for any additional copies to get a digital accident report that they currently pay to get a report. The Boone County Sheriff's Office will also be participating in this program. Motion to authorize the signing of the attached contract for Lexus Nexus Cop Logic Solutions e-Crash Digital Reporting.
May I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Flurry, I have a second by Alderman Arivolo, is that correct?
No, I second it.
Okay, Alderman Stevens, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion on the floor? Alderman?
Snow has a question.
Go ahead, Snow.
And so what, we're charging an additional fee of $5 for extra copies of some sort. What is the current cost of a paper one?
Currently, for Unit 1 and Unit 2, which are typically the two vehicles that are going to be involved in a motor vehicle accident, they get a copy of the accident report at the scene, and then any additional would be charged an additional $5. That is going to be the same going forward with Lexus Nexus as well.
And so when does that fee occur, as far as that goes? Because I'm assuming, I gather, that this gets printed on, out of the vehicle itself. So who or what pays when?
No, what we're going to give them is a driver exchange information sheet with both vehicle occupant driver information on it, with the case number and how to access the digital portal. That's all they're going to get. Where currently, they get a copy of the accident report, which the officer has to fill out on scene, which takes approximately, depending on how many vehicles and occupants involved, could be, you know, anywhere from 10 to 30 minutes, where this is going to be significantly more efficient. And then if they need additional copies from there, it would cost the people $5, and then insurance companies, I believe they're going to charge them $15.
This is Mike Drell, and actually, I looked over the agreement the first time. The version of your packets is actually a draft version that I had requested changes to. There'll be a clean version with all the changes I requested made to it in your council packets for next week. I actually had a chance to sit down, talk to the sales rep and the legal team a little bit. There will be no change in cost to our constituents nor to the city. There'll be no cost to the city whatsoever for the program. We will actually have digital copies of every single accident report on our own servers as well, so even if we moved away from using Lexus Nexus, we'd still have all the data and be able to have that available for anybody that needed it. Where Lexus will actually make the money is on the sales of third parties that would otherwise be foiling us for a lot of documentation. So they'll be making their money from insurance companies and entities like that that are trying to purchase the product. But as to the people involved in the accident and as to the city, there's no change in the cost structure whatsoever.
Alderman Frank?
What about when you have to send a copy of the accident report downstate? What would you do then?
Yeah, that process isn't going to change as far as how to go about getting that information. It's all going to be spelled out on the document that they receive from the officer, and then they would just follow the instructions from there.
So you'd still have to send a paper copy?
Yeah. Well, not necessarily a paper copy. You could send a digital copy, download it, and then submit it electronically.
Additional questions? Alderman Porter? I believe Alderman Stevens is still waiting to make his comment. Alderman Stevens, please proceed.
How far are we going to be able to get into Lexus Nexus with the police department? Because my wife's law firm uses it, and I know they can look a lot of stuff up.
Completely different product.
Different product.
Yeah. Lexus Nexus is an absolutely huge corporation that has many different products available. This has nothing to do with either the legal research side of it nor the, excuse me, nor the investigative side of it, which our department actually uses as well, but this is a completely different product.
Okay, because I know it's dang good stuff and you can look a lot up with it.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor?
Alderman Porter?
Porter, please proceed.
Yes, I just have one question for the chief here, and this also applies to the next thing coming up on the agenda, too. Is there going to be any option of getting a paper copy of the report? Reason I ask is because we do have a lot of lower, not a lot, but we have lower-income people that may or may not have, be able to afford internet access or the equipment, so they may not be able to get a digital copy. Is there going to be some way for them to still get a paper copy at some point?
Yeah, because we will have access to all that information that's going to be housed at the Public Safety Building. Our records department would be able to print those off, just like they currently do.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? So we have motion and a second. Going, going. All those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is passed. Next up, we have a discussion about DigiTicket. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next memo in your packet is a request for authorization to sign the DigiTicket Memorandum of Understanding. Belvidere Police Department is requesting authorization to sign the attached MOU between the Boone County Circuit Clerk's Office, Boone County Sheriff's Office, and Belvidere Police Department. If you look forward in the memo, explains a little bit of what DigiTicket is. DigiTicket allows officers to quickly create, submit tickets electronically. Currently, officers spend precious time on patrol handwriting traffic tickets. DigiTicket is a web-based digital software program that allows officers to enter traffic stop data into the computer using dropdown menus, easy-to-use screens, and then that information is then printed via mobile printer contained right in the squad car. Information's transmitted to the Belvidere Police Department Report Management System, Boone County Circuit Clerk's Office, and Illinois Department of Transportation, which currently, we have to manually enter that, all of that data in. The information improves officer safety, it provides higher productivity, cost reduction, and it allows the officer in the squad car to scan a driver's license. As far as the generation of revenue, in 2011, the state created an e-citation fund generated from court fees that have been designated for each participating agency for the sole purpose of electronic digital ticketing programs like this one. Total cost, the purchase price for DigiTicket is $86,294. The Belvidere Police Department has accumulated since 2011, according to the Boone County Circuit Clerk's Office, $17,650.73 in our e-citation fund. The Belvidere Police Department's share of the purchase cost is $8,000. The Belvidere Police Department's share of the CIS integration that is necessary to allow the digital information to be imported into our Report Management System is $1,920. Going forward, the police department will be responsible for any additional paper expenses, replacement and repair expenses, and any additional services requested from Seltus, which is the company for DigiTicket, not included in the original purchase price. The expenditures are currently unknown going forward, but would be taken from the e-citation fund and would be no additional cost to the city of Belvidere. Additional information can also be found in the attached documents submitted in your packets. Motion, the Belvidere Police Department requests authorization to have the attached Memorandum of Understanding between the Boone County Circuit Clerk's Office, Boone County Sheriff's Office, and Belvidere Police Department, signed.
Snow make that motion?
I'll second that. Porter?
I have a motion by Snow and a second by Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Arivolo?
I got a question, Snow.
Well, we got a couple ahead of you. Alderman Snow, Alderman Arivolo, please proceed.
Will this all be updated in like real time? So as soon as the officer submits it, will the circuit clerk and...
No, currently, it would be like we do with our video system. The officer would have to drive back to the Public Safety Building, and then it transmits that data at that time.
Will there be a way to implement it in real time, so they don't have to do that?
I would have to find out, I'm not exactly sure. Do you know, Lieutenant?
I believe it might be subject to cellular data. I mean, it can transfer that way. I don't believe I'd want to like ask that question, but it makes logical sense to do.
I didn't say this earlier, Lieutenant Malloy's here to assist, because he's kind of been an integral part in working with the Circuit Clerk's Office and our department in this program as well, so he's got a lot of information to provide it.
Alderman Frank?
Yeah, on page two, it explains that officers would not have to be required to go to court. Is that going to alleviate them during overtime by attending court cases?
There's that potential. What they're alluding to is the fact that because there would be less mistakes on traffic citations, the potential for officers that have to go to court for those reasons would be minimized.
Additional questions or comments?
Snow has a question.
Okay. Does that snow? Alderman Snow, you have the floor.
So the cost is $86,000 for the system, per se. The city's portion, which is being paid out of a fund that's already collected, is eight grand. So where's the rest of the money coming from? Is this more of a burden on the clerk's office that's picking up the rest of the bill? Or what's the deal there? The numbers don't add up, that's all.
Yep, nope, good question. Both the Sheriff's Department, our department, as well, the Circuit Clerk's Office, all have e-citation funds. The Circuit Clerk's Office gets the lion's share of those fees, so they're going to be paying the lion's share of the original startup costs. And then going forward, if there's any additional costs that are generated, they're going to potentially help share in those costs as well. But the remainder of those costs between the Sheriff's Department and the Belvidere Police Department are split up depending on department usage.
And this is Mike Drell.
And with the 17 grand versus the eight grand, that leaves almost 10 grand left over. Would that be eligible to go for the cost of the paper toner and the rest of the cost of keeping up with the hardware that might be associated with this process?
Yep, and that, those funds will stay in that e-citation account and can only be used for things related to digital ticketing programs. used for things related to digital ticketing program. We can't use it for anything else, and those would be the expenses we'd be looking to use that money for.
And what kind of warranty do we have on the hardware that's going to be in the car? And so then, if that does break down, assumably while we have funded in that e-account, we could use it to replace those?
Yeah, I would have to check specifically. I would anticipate it's probably about a year warranty, but I would have to get that information from Seltus, as well as the company that sells the printers.
If it's standard printer, what do we, we don't have the printer printed out yet, so we do whatever the printing warranty is.
Yeah, we've looked at a couple different options as far as printers go, so we don't necessarily know exactly what that's going to be, and it'll be something we'd have to take into consideration when making that decision.
So we can still use those e-funds at roughly ten grand left over to purchase those for all the squad cars?
Yes, that is correct. This initial go-around, all of those printers and all of that is going to be covered and accounted for, and that cost would only be associated to anything above and beyond what we currently are anticipating needing right now.
Alderman Stevens?
Thank you.
Does the department still use them old tickets with the multi-copy, you have to press through, and by the time you get the last copy, you can barely read it? Do they still use those?
Yeah, that's our current way of writing a traffic ticket.
This will be far better, then.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Far more efficient, I would think.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Yes, Alderman Arivolo?
Have you looked at thermal printer? Some of them stop using it. I know they, during the heat, I know they might smudge and not be able to see, but I don't know if you looked into thermal.
Yeah, that's exactly what these printers are that we're looking at, are thermal printers.
Good point. Anybody else?
And you won't have to buy the tickets. The old style.
Hearing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approval of the motion, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, chief. Under Finance and Personnel, unfinished business, we have none this evening. Under Number Four, Finance and Personnel, new business, there is also none this evening. Under Other, under A, Public Works, we have Certificate of Satisfactory Completion, Platte Number Four of Sager Corporate Park. Director Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in the packet, in accordance with Section 15161B of the city's subdivision control ordinance, I do hereby certify that the public improvements required of the developer for Platte Number Four of Sager Corporate Park have been completed, and those improvements have been inspected and approved by this department. I would recommend that the city council approve a resolution accepting the public improvements that have been completed for Platte Number Four of Sager Corporate Park.
May I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman. Second, please.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stevens, second by Arivolo. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Stevens?
So that everyone else knows, Sager Parkway is which one?
Sager Platte Four is that includes Tripp Road and includes the area of the lot, specifically the Magna construction built by Becknell.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next up is Tripp Road Engineering Agreement. Again, memo in your packet, same project. The reconstruction project has been completed, and the improvements have been approved by IDOT. According to our agreement with Becknell for the Tripp Road project, they were responsible for the engineering portion of the project with the EDP grant that we were able to receive for this project, paying for fifty percent of the engineering cost. The final cost for the engineering was eighty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and twenty-seven cents, and the grant paid for forty thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and sixty-three cents, which left forty thousand, eight-fifty-six, sixty-four to be paid by Becknell. And Becknell, to date, has paid us forty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-seven dollars and eighteen cents. Therefore, I would recommend approval of a reimbursement in the amount of six thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fifty-four cents to Becknell for the overpayment of engineering fees for the Tripp Road reconstruction project, and those, that cost will be paid for from line item zero-one-four-seven-five-one-fourty-nine-forty.
May I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning a motion now on the floor?
Snow has a comment.
Yes, Alderman Snow, please proceed.
So being this is a line item in that, so does this do anything to your budget for the year, or is it, you had already taken that into account when you crunched your numbers?
No, it's basically, it's just repaying what they paid us more than what they actually owed us, so it has no effect on the budget.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Stevens, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.